Okay, and I guess I will call it to order. We are here holding a public hearing to consider forwarding a request to the Joint Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance in Stonington for a possible bond issue in the amount of $10 million for critical repairs and upgrades to the three treatment facilities, a collection system, which is about 50 miles of underground piping, 17 pumping stations, and the odor control facilities. For those of us who, for those of you who don't know who we are, we're the Water Pollution Control Authority, and we, we run and oversee the sewer treatment plants and the collection system. We, there's five members of us, Jim Petrowski, Charles Sheehan, Lynn Young, Pete Balastroffy, myself, who's Rich Cody, the chairman, Pete's the vice chairman, I think Jim is the secretary. Lynn's been a member for a long time, and Charles, we're happy to have joined us recently. We also have with us Doug Nettleton, our director. I guess the way these public hearings are done, from what I understand virtually, is I, I will make some preparatory remarks and give some background to what we're doing here and why we're looking for the expenditure and the bond. And then I will be reading, Lynn may help me with some of that, and then I will read the letters we have, we have about 15 letters, and I'll read those into the record. So, in terms of background, the three treatment plants in Stonington came into being as early as the 1960s and were constructed then until like the 1970s. They came in under administrative orders that were largely financed by federal and state grants, grants that are really, that are just no longer available anymore. What, the reason they were put into operation was to make the swi, make the harbors and rivers swimmable again, and the shellfish beds to reopen. That was the purpose of the Clean Water Act, and it, the purpose of these systems is to do, do that, continue to do that for the asset we have here in Stonington, which is our shoreline, our harbors and rivers, and generally clean water. Incidentally, we recently opened a new shellfish bed near the Mystic River facility. These treatment plants and systems are heavily regulated by the state and federal governments. Each has a separate permit that has strict effluent parameters. Every five years, the permits are renewed with tighter limits, meaning more operational expense every five years. Each permit is issued by the DEEP, which is a state agency, but it's also reviewed by the federal EPA, which can veto a permit issued by the DEEP. So, we're, we're regulated in two levels, both the state and the feds. These permits also regulate the collection system and the pumping stations. In recent years, this collection system statewide of age, DEEP has increased its concern in that area and is focusing, for example, on requiring studies of infiltration into the collection system from groundwater and some pumps, the goal being likely to eventually line the pipes. DEEP also concerns itself with the operational aspects of the collection system, like pumping stations. That agency by itself and under its usual pressure from EPA has very limited patience with municipalities that tend to kick the can down the road and not repair. They're not shy about taking matters out of the hands of local towns and issuing orders, which are much more expensive to comply with, usually two times, and to comply with than, than, than a town having had the foresight to put its own plan into, into action. In other words, it winds up being a question of local control or state control. What are we concerned with when running these facilities? And the age of these facilities is equipment failures and bypasses. A bypass is a technical term. What it means is that if equipment fails at the plant, the effluent is discharged without treatment, without disinfection. This means the waterways are suddenly contaminated with coliform and bacteria, shellfish beds are closed, the water becomes unswimmable, et cetera. When I talk about the sewer treatment system, I often use an analogy to when you go to a show, maybe on Broadway, and you're enjoying the show, you never notice the light crew. No one ever says anything that, that there's people up there running the lights, running the spotlights, until something goes wrong. And that's when you realize that they're there. We are very similar. We run these things, nobody notices us. We very rarely have even one member of the public attend our meetings. But again, if something goes wrong, we hear about it. One of the questions is why now? Why is money, why are we looking for a bond issue now? The answer really is no surprise to our members, because we've been listening for a long time to our operational staff at our meetings tell us about the condition of the system we have. Our pump stations are old. We had a pipe failure on Holm Street. We had an expensive failure of the aeration line at the Pocketuck plant. We expect more of this. We know we have put Band-Aids on. Please understand, we're not talking about an aging system in Stonington. We're talking about a system that isn't aging anymore. It's aged, it's in convalescence. We're here to say that the condition has become critical, and nobody on our board wants to see the town be put into a position where it has to comply with the expensive dictates of the state. We all prefer a local resolution and local control. In our world, critical means some, before something breaks. Because our system is so regulated, we can't simply update something without engineering, DEEP review, and approval. We need lead time. We can't really wait for something to go before we, we do something about it. We have been developing and on track for a bonding appropriation request since more than a year ago. As things developed in this vein, conditions changed, such as the Pocketuck equipment problem I referenced. We first began to try to add items to the annual CIP budget, but it occurred to us and to other town officials that with the low interest rates where they are, it would make better financial sense to bond these improvements, because the expense can be spread out over time. Then, of course, we all know the COVID hit with its prohibitions against in-person gathering. Many towns were immediately stopped from conducting their ordinary business affairs like this, but with pressure from those towns, the governor issued an executive order number 7S. The order allows the towns to determine for themselves, when something is important, to carry on their ordinary business by authorizing both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance together to pass the necessary measures. It requires a procedure, too, that the town bodies engage the public as much as is possible in order to do what it can, as best as is possible under the circumstances, to solicit and to acquire public input as a substitution for a referendum vote. The public hearing is one of, this public hearing is one of those efforts. There is no desire among us here to circumvent the ordinary process. Every single person on all these boards is extremely reluctant, but we feel we have little choice, since we do not know when the restrictions will be lifted, or if they will be re-imposed, or when the next equipment breakdown will occur. Our equipment runs 24/7, and it's not waiting for anything. Right now, we're doing the best we can under these extremely unusual circumstances. We hope you can appreciate our position as volunteers. I will make one further comment. The town owns and operates three treatment plants, as I've mentioned. We are unaware of any municipality anywhere of comparable size, up and down the East Coast, that runs and has the expense of running three plants. We are required now by law to update our facility plan, something this bond proposal will cover, and the town must, it really has to, begin to look at a plan to consolidate these into one treatment plant. If we don't, our posterity will forever curse us for not having the foresight to reduce the municipal expenditures and debt loads. We plan to take a hard look at that in our facilities plan, and we will, in the future, be welcoming comment on it. It's a reality we must face. Lynn, before I turn to the comments, did you want to make some, some comments about the financial impact of the bond we're requesting?
Yeah, so, we're fortunate that the municipal bond market is cooperative, interest rates are historically low. So, the most recent data we have suggests that the median-priced house in Stonington is about $318,000, and the impact of this bond, which will have its interest payments and principal payments delayed until the next fiscal year, which is '21, '22, will be about $21 on that median-sized house, or that median-value house. So, this is a pretty good deal in consideration of the fact that, you know, you don't want to be in a position of not being able to flush, or take a shower, or do whatever. So, we want to take advantage of historically low rates with an open municipal market today versus taking the risk a few months from now that that may, the door may close for us. So, that's what I would say. And, you know, it's a, it's good value for the money, and we don't have any choice. These are critical things we have to do, and the size and scope of the failures that are occurring are getting larger by the day.
Okay, thanks Lynn. Incidentally, if there are any members of the public who are watching this and want to ask any questions, I understand, after I read the letters we have into, into the record, I will, I understand you can hit star nine or something like that, that will put a hand up and Roger, let us know if you have a question, and one of us will hopefully give you the answer. So, so if you will bear with me, I have letters to read. As I said, I think we've got 14 or 15 in favor, one is, I guess, either neutral, or asks us to look at other bonding or other funding opportunities. That one is from Chris Bleuer, I hope I'm pronouncing it right, B.L.E.U.H.E.R., Seven Diving Street in Stonington. He writes, hello, has the town considered alternative procurement methods other than bonding or CAPEX? Out of the town budget, I am referring to energy performance contracting, which is a long-established method of procuring capital improvements paid for through the decrease of the community's energy operating budget. And he provides a link. These are, should be posted online, by the way. Depending on the type of improvements necessary to cite, performance contracting can be a cash-neutral vehicle for realizing the improvements. There are Connecticut-based consultants who will provide no cost evaluations to determine if Stonington Plant is a good candidate. Without taking this option into consideration, I am against the bond issue for improvements at the sewer plants. Doug, perhaps at the end, I can ask you to just sort of comment on that, because we have looked at the energy possibilities. Turning next to the next one, a letter from Sandy Grimes, who is chairman of the Stonington Waterfront Commission. He writes, my name is Sandy Grimes. I am the chair of the Stonington Waterfront Commission. Our commission oversees all town property adjacent to water. Thus, we have concern that our sewer plants and all town, and all on-town property adjacent to the water are up to date and in excellent running order and condition. Both myself and the commission urge the town to push forward with a plan and bond issue that will update and fix the system to enable our waters to remain clean and free of pollutants and contaminants. The Stonington fishing fleet operates at the town dock in Stonington Village. The outflow from the plant is next to the dock, making it a necessity that the water is clean in order for that industry to be viable. The other two plants lie adjacent to water boundaries of our town. It is of utmost importance that our plant's outflow remain clean and safe for businesses, marinas, et cetera, and recreational activities. Please consider our requests. Thank you. The next letter is on the letterhead of the Mystic Chamber of Commerce, to whom this concerns. The Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce supports the bond issue to upgrade town Stonington sewer system. As a membership organization of more than 730, we are only too aware of the need for repairs, replacements, and improvements to continue our good fortune, our good fortune healthy economic growth. We are a town of many small businesses that rely on the commerce generated by the tourism industry and the relocation of people looking for a wonderful place to live. Despite the pandemic, we believe the region will bounce back to its previously healthy positioning as one of the few areas of growth in Connecticut. We see this sewer project as essential to those developments that are on our horizon. We don't want to see these opportunities slip away. With the system in its current vulnerable state, if we do not act now, we are tempting catastrophe, even for the businesses we already have. Our town and this region are treasures that attract many visitors from all over the world. Those visitors and the business they bring are what enable us to have the wonderful lives we enjoy. We must care for, we must care not only for our natural environment, but for the town infrastructure. We need this project, please support it. Sincerely, Peggy Roberts, President. The next one is an email from Lynn Frishman, excuse me. And he writes, I am writing this letter in support of the sewer bond issue presented by the WPCA to the Board of Finance and now to the Board of Selectmen, representing our legislative body. As the longest-serving member of the Board of Finance, and having chaired that board for 18 years, I have long views, perspective of the town's finances. While the plants have experienced periodic upgrades, the network, our infrastructure has not had the same attention. While I personally am not on the system, I am highly aware of the benefits that the system provides to all of our taxpayers. Without a properly functioning system, we would not have the development we have over the past, over the last few years, and our taxes would be significantly higher on our residents. That would have a serious impact on the level of services that the town will be able to provide, as well as the quality of life for those residents. An operational sewer system protects our environment and ensures that the rivers and harbors are clean and our ecosystem is protected. Those who know me realize that I take my stewardship of the taxpayers' funds very seriously. I urge all members of the Board of Selectmen to approve this bond issue, because it is absolutely in the interest of all Stonington taxpayers. Sincerely, Glenn J. Frishman, 1219 Pequot Choyel. Next one is on the letterhead of the Mystic Harbor Management Commission. Dear members of the Water Pollution Control Authority, I am writing in favor of a bond issuance of $10 million for the WPCA to address capital needs for the town of Stonington Sewerage System. As both a resident and chair of the Mystic Harbor Management Commission, I understand the value well-functioning sewer system brings to our community. I have served on the commission since 1990, and over this time, I have seen firsthand the importance of preventing sewage and chemicals from entering our harbor. During the 2019 budget season, our commission discussed at various meetings the importance of Stonington's Board of Finance providing matching funding for a pump-out boat that services the Mystic River. During April 2019 meeting, our now first-elect Chief Burrell attended. In her previous capacity as a member of the Board of Finance, the commission shared many reasons why the pump-out boat are important, such as protecting the beach at the YMCA, the oyster farms, the shark swim between the bridges, the transient anchorage areas, and the use of the river by the crew team. Reasons for the pump-out boat are critically, so critically, I'm sorry, the reasons for the pump-out boat are so critical similarly apply to the reasons why we need to ensure a high-quality sewer system. Failure to improve the system could cause severe contamination and pollution of the town's waterways and watersheds. With this understanding, I support the town of Stonington, seeking the funding to proceed with needed work as quickly as is feasible. Thank you for your consideration. David Correll, Chairman. Hope I pronounced that correctly. The next one is from a Stephen Cone, Ph.D. Dear members of the Water Pollution Control Authority, I am writing in favor of a bond issuance of $10 million for the WPCA to address capital needs for the town of Stonington Sewerage System. As president of Mystic Aquarium, I can attest to the enormous costs associated with maintaining, upgrading, or replacing pumping systems, tanks, and pipes. Systems grow older, it becomes more difficult and costly to repair them, because many pumping systems are engineered and designed for specific situations and needs. In most instances, when a pump fails, it must be completely replaced, which can easily run in the tens of thousands of dollars. Likewise, street pipe replacement is an expensive undertaking. There is no question that the town of Stonington Sewerage System is complex with three separate plants and 17 pumping stations. Assuring that repairs are made to the system while also investing and planning for a more robust, modern system is critically important for the health, environmental protection, and economic needs of the town of Stonington. The current system is plagued by leaks and system failures that need to be fixed immediately. Failure to do so could cause severe contamination and pollution of the town's precious waterways and watersheds. Even with stagnant economic growth, the sewage collection and treatment system must be upgraded. When the present system was designed and installed in the 1960s, most homes and offices had fewer bathrooms, and the use of water generally was far less than it is today. Also, the need to protect waterways and watersheds and the adverse impact of sewage on long-term human health is not a study or is known as today, or is known as it is today. Simply put, a healthy Stonington needs a well-maintained sewage system. It is in every citizen's interest to assure that the current system is upgraded, and the planning commences for a new one. It is essential to the economic interests of the town that new development, properly zoned, can be approved with the knowledge that there is enough capacity to accommodate reasonable and managed growth. As a resident of 4 Fallon Road, Pocketuck, and president of Mystic Aquarium, I believe that the bond issuance is essential to assure the conservation of our environment, the health and well-being of our citizens. Stephen M. Coen, Ph.D., president and CEO of Mystic Aquarium. The next one is from Greg Howard. I am writing to express my support of the $10 million sewer bond to address needed repairs, replacements, and improvements at our pump stations, underground infrastructure, and three treatment facilities. I understand the uncertainty and risks around public health and the market, and agree with the need to move forward with the plan to issue this bond this summer. While this would normally be done by referendum, it does not look possible in a timeframe that we, as a town, need this to be done. Now it is the time for Stonington to trust and support our elected leaders. As a community, we have elected and entrusted the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance to make crucial decisions for the good of Stonington. I believe that members of these boards in coordination with the WPCA have thoroughly examined and researched the current needs and risks to, to the town, and have come to the best conclusion for the community. Greg Howard, Pocketuck. The next one, from a Diane Denise Easton. Dear members of WPCA, I'm a full-time Stonington resident. It is essential to plan for the long-term viability of our town's environmental and infrastructure needs. We have an opportunity to both stabilize and proactively develop a sewer plan for a future that is dependent on safeguarding our environments and providing adequate economic opportunities for the community. I am in favor of approving a $10 million bond. Denise Easton, 43 Main Street, Stonington. Here is one from Paul G. Sartor, Jackson Street, Mystic. Dear WPCA, I've been a Stonington resident for 35 years, plus 35 years. I currently serve as chair of Stonington Facilities Committee. Thank you for all your work on this issue. This is a topic some residents like to take for granted. Take a shower, flush a toilet, and away it goes. Well, while sewers may not be a sexy issue, it's a lot less sexy when it's not working the way we expect. Certainly agree with that. We all know that, we all know the many reasons why it is an essential municipal responsibility to maintain a seamlessly functioning wastewater system, yet we currently don't have one. For too many years, I've read too many times about our sewer plants being inefficient, inadequate, needing temporary repairs, Band-Aids, and no spare parts, et cetera. As, and as my family's home is just a few hundred yards away from the Mystic plant, we've been subject to plant odors from time to time. I read the minutes of your 6:30-20 joint meeting with Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. I fully agree with all and support this $10 million bond proposal. It is critical these proposed improvements be completed ASAP, and in such a manner that is not required annual CIP requests and finger-crossing every hurricane season. I am fortunate to have been involved in some significant successful town projects, the new SHS and the recent athletic field project. The primary focus of these projects was to develop proposals that result in real solutions that prudently spend taxpayer dollars. It is clear to me that Band-Aid options almost always result in long-term inefficiencies and wasted tax dollars. I encourage you to please act now in favor of this $10 million bond proposal. This is the responsible, prudent course of action. Thank you for all you do. Sincerely, Paul Sartor, 12 Jackson Avenue, Mystic. Next one is, my name is Richard Easton. I live at 43 Main Street in the Borough. I am writing to express my strong support for the town to pursue $10 million of bonding authority to enable critically-needed repairs and improvements to its sewer plants and pumping stations as part of a single unified comprehensive plan, rather than on a piecemeal basis. I strongly believe that a modern and well-maintained infrastructure is critically important to the town's ability to promote economic development and improve the quality of life of its residents. Thank you, Richard Easton. Here is one, addressed to the Stonington Water Pollution Control Authority. As the WPCA considers the future of the town's three sewer plants, I'm submitting this comment in favor of the bonding plan. Recently reported in the day, WPCA and Finance Board member Lynn Young has stated that our sewer system is in pretty dire straits. I also urge the WPCA, in thinking of the long-term interests of the town, please consider the plight of Aquatic Cove and Little Narragansett Bay and its deliberations. Studies for more than the last 10 years have noted the degraded condition of the water quality of Aquatic Cove. For example, a November 2015 article in the day reports on the conclusions of a six-year study by Cleanup Sound and Harbors, which shows, which quote, "show that Aquatic Cove, a picturesque, narrow inlet on the western end of Little Narragansett Bay, has the poorest water, water quality of all the sites monitored," end quote. A major source of the degraded condition of the cove is poorly maintained septic systems and septic tank runoff. A significant step to improve the water quality of Aquatic Cove would extend the town's sewer lines to include the two-mile or so stretch of Stonington Road and Elm Street beginning near South Mearangia, where the current Pocketuck Sewer System ends. This stretch of road, which runs parallel to Aquatic Cove, contains hundreds of homes, marinas, motels, banquet facilities, and retail stores. Many of these facilities have aging septic systems well past their useful life. Providing these homes and businesses with access to sewer lines would go a long way toward improving the quality of Aquatic Cove. An added benefit of this extension would allow the town to tie the Pocketuck plant with the Borough plant, which should permit for greater flexibility in the future. Thank you, Robert Taylor, 92 Old North Road, Mystic. Next one is from Rebecca Kepel in Morgan King, Town of Stonington. Dear Water Pollution Control Authority, we are writing in support of the bond issuance in the amount of $10 million for major repairs and upgrades to the town of Stonington's three sewer treatment facilities. We have lived in Stonington for almost all of our adult lives, and conducted our small business here for the last eight. As taxpayers and business owners, we entrust that the funds being maintained by the town go toward priority maintenance and upgrades for systems that we all use and benefit from. If these fundamental improvements are not made, Stonington will have more difficulty attracting new and/or retaining existing businesses, residents, and investors. We're all for Yankee thriftness, but it's clear from the review of the WPCA's operating budget, critical system infrastructure needs, that this demands our immediate attention. Please move forward with the bond to repair and upgrade our sewer treatment system. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Rebecca Kepel, Morgan King. Here is one. Dear Chairman Cody. For some reason, I don't have the second page on this. I have it somewhere else, I'll find it. Dear Chairman Cody, I strongly support a bond issuance of $10 million to continue the maintenance of, upgrades to, and the development of a new facilities plan for Stonington Sewerage Collection and Treatment System. I support this for two reasons, improved water quality and support of recreational and commercial shellfishing. The two are closely related. In the years before the system upgrades undertaken in 2010, 2015, it was not uncommon for the Shellfish Commission to receive a call that the Mystic Plant had lost coronation, and as a result, partially-treated sewage containing high-level, high-bacteria levels was flowing into the Mystic River. Immediately, we had to close the recreational and commercial shellfish beds. Under the leadership of Jim Sisk and Hal Storres, and with over $18 million of funding provided by Stonington taxpayers, that has changed. After a careful study of the performance of Mystic Plant in 2017 and 2018, the Connecticut Department of Agriculture, Bureau of Agriculture in 2019 reopened the Lower Mystic River to commercial shellfishing during the winter months when the moorings are unoccupied. This change dramatically improved the growing oyster industry in the Mystic River. Most of the funds of the 2010-2015 upgrades were focused on improvements to the Mystic Plant. Most of the funds of the 2010-2015 upgrades were focused on improvements to the Mystic Plant, but there were significant improvements to the Pawtucket and Borough plants as well. All three plants are critical to the quality of Stonington's coastal waters. We no longer use chlorine to disinfect our sewer effluent, though much less chlorine is discharged into our coastal waters. Exposure to chlorine is harmful to fish and shellfish, especially juvenile. Shellfishing is important because it provides an early indicator of water quality changes. Recreational shellfish harvesting requires a much higher water quality than that needed for safe swimming. If shellfish beds are closed, that means water quality is heading in the wrong direction and other water uses are at risk. Right now, we are seeing the reopening of shellfish beds, which means water quality is improving. In 2010, Stonington taxpayers agreed to make a tremendous investment in our water pollution control facility and therefore the quality of water at our sewer. We are seeing the good results we hoped for. However, we cannot expect the good results to continue if we fail to act. The system must be maintained and improved. The proposed bond issue will support our continued progress toward keeping our coastal waters clean so Stonington residents and visitors can enjoy the many water-related activities Stonington has to offer. Sincerely yours, Donald L. Murphy, Chair, Stonington Shellfish Commission. The pile's getting a little thinner. The next one is from the Economic Development Commission. WPCA, the Economic Development Commission supports critical infrastructure investments in the town of Stonington and offers this letter of support for the proposed $10 million sewer bond. In January 2019, the EDC provided a letter of support for the subsequently adopted WPCA CIP requests, the inflow and infiltration study, and the Mystic to Borough transfer project. The sewer bond follows logical progression of pragmatic and wise investments in town infrastructure. The EDC advocates for the importance of the community, town officials, residents, taxpayers, who invest in itself. Robust infrastructure, including public sewer, allows the town to consider economic development proposals from a position of strength. Sewer capacity should not be the constraint. Upon reviewing the sewer bond proposal, the EDC wishes to emphasize these key justifications in support of the proposed bonding. The WPCA is beholden to state and federal mandates to abide by Clean Water Act regulations. With no state or federal funds available, funding falls to the town. Proactive investments needed for compliance, uninterrupted service, and to avoid development moratorium. Stonington's rivers and shorelines are a major draw for the town's tourism and economic sector and must be protected. The town must continue to grow its tax base to fund town expenses like schools, essential services, and improvements that benefit the quality of life of residents, visitors and businesses. The town must maintain reliable sewer infrastructure, such that capacity is not a constraint on economic development and town needs. The EDC agrees that the long-range plan is essential and offers to partner with the WPCA in a planning effort linking investments to economic return. In closing, the EDC fully supports the proposed sewer bond and recommends the bond request be sent to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for consideration and approval per Executive Order 7S. Respectfully submitted, Dave Hammond, Chairman. This next one. I can't really read the name. Looks like Rick Newsom. Meadowbrook Lane in Mystic, 32 Meadowbrook Lane. This is one that, if people are interested, they want to see it online because there are a variety of websites divided by the gentleman. But it said, regarding a public hearing by WPCA on June 16, 2020, I have the following comments. In general, I am in favor of the $10 million bond request as I believe anything the town can do to improve our estuaries and all on sound should be done as they are all labeled as impaired by Connecticut Deep. Various studies by the Nature Conservancy, Yukon, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, show that well over 50% of the nitrogen load to LIS is caused by sewer and septics. Here is a link to one of the studies. At least it's a link to Yukon.edu. However, I see no mention that pending sea level rise was considered in coming up with the amount for the bond and I am concerned that money being spent for upgrades and fixes will be wasted if a location becomes inoperable due to sea level rise. I'll just comment that that's something the facilities plan will be looking at. The long-term study to replace three plants with one modern plant is desperately needed. Having three outdated plants is terribly expensive and inefficient. Sea level rise will also cause more and more private septic systems to fail as the water table is pushed up, thereby flooding the homeowner's systems. The Mystic and Stonington Borough plants, along with some pumping stations, will eventually be flooded. I would especially like the WPCA and town to investigate how the town of Arcata, California treats their wastewater. They created a marsh, and there's a website or a link here. Not only does the marsh treat wastewater less expensively, it offers wildlife and recreational benefits. This natural system has been used in thousands of places around the world. There's another link. Sea level rise eventually is going to inundate almost all the marshes in Stonington. There is no place for marshes to migrate due to Amtrak and development. The town could work with Connecticut Deep to transform Barn Island, WMA into a new type of marsh to filter out our wastewater while benefiting wildlife. Redging material is almost always available to build up the new marsh and there could be quite a bit of conservation funding available to create it, which would lessen the financial burdens to the town. There was a book written about it, for those who may be interested, and there's a picture of it online that he's provided. The town should also consider purchasing the land that has been for sale, 238 Palmer Neck Road. There aren't a lot of empty lots near the waterfront. If the town decides to go ahead with a constructed wetland plan, thought might be used. Fortune is very light. Land swap is part of the BIWMA for the facility needed to support the marsh treatment. If not used for such a facility, could be a town-owned park. I believe it's Rick Newton or Newsom, 32 Meadowbrook Lane in Mystic. And that actually is the last letter. Doug, did you have any comments you needed or you'd like to make?
On the letter from Chris, I just would like to comment that, you know, as you guys know, we've looked at both savings from lighting and we've even looked at installing solar panels at a couple of our facilities. On what he's talking about, or what I believe he's talking about, would require a study, which would take some time to do and obviously, we need this money right away. But what I've seen in the past with a power study is to save power, you're going to need to replace equipment that is more efficient. So it comes down to whether there'd be enough money to do that kind of stuff and also save enough power to actually pay off or afford a seatability to bond money through that kind of savings. The other point I want to make is that we've switched over to UV light for disinfection, getting rid of chlorine, which we used before. That UV light is basically, it can't be, I don't know of any way to save electrically on that because we require a certain intensity for it to do its job, that is, to kill the bacteria. And those bulbs are special and they're designed for the systems that are in place. The other point would be that our electrical costs are paid through our contractor, Suez, and we just increased the contract to pay the additional cost. Any savings, obviously, would have to be negotiated to come back to us, which I'm not saying couldn't happen, but it would take some time. And lastly, to do any kind of study right now would be hard because our access to the facilities is, because of the COVID issue, the plants have been in kind of a lockdown where we're trying to minimize staff, any kind of outside staff from entering the facilities, just to keep the operators safe and to keep them healthy because we only have so many of them. But I would be happy to look into this, but I do think that we've kind of looked at it before and we just didn't see that kind of savings that would generate the kind of revenue that I believe Chris was talking about. Those are my comments, Rich.
Okay, thanks. So that ends our. The question is, do we have anybody who has hit star nine who would like to ask a question? Roger, do we have anybody?
I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand, so I think it might be okay.
Rich, before we close the public hearing, I just want to say one more thing, which is that if we don't do this bond, let's look at it from that point of view. We've been into SIP last year and in the next budget year for $3 million and that's what it's going to look like for the foreseeable future if we don't do the bond because we have no choice. So if we do this bond, I believe we're going to return the next fiscal year's SIP back to the town and then free up resources for other worthy projects that maybe aren't big enough to bond or maybe can't bond when the time comes around to do it. So that's another thing to consider here, which is that, you know, it's this or it's that, but what's not going to happen is the problem isn't going away.
Right, right. Before I close the public hearing, does anybody else want to add something? Charles, Jim, Pete? I put you on the spot. I just saw that ask.
Mr. Chairman? Chairman? I think you did a very good job in your opening remarks of talking about our duties and the permits that we operate under and Lynn's presentation was excellent as well on the finances. I want to underscore just one point. And you made it in your overarching remarks, but it can't be lost in the transcript. That is, that we are a regulated business. We operate under the constraints of a permit that requires us to perform to a standard. So we measure that standard. We have to self-report. And when things go wrong, as you said, the EPA and the DEP know immediately because we report them to the regulators. The fines can be tremendous and it isn't just an idle comment or a scare tactic that you put on the record. These fines are actually levied against WPCAs across Connecticut on a regular basis and that's a fact and they can be substantial. So you add fines to the prospect of what we face if we don't approve this financing and you add the contingencies. That is, the things that we have outlined in this plan are the things that we know we have to do. There are things that are going to happen in this system that are simply going to happen because of extreme weather events, limiting circumstances that are more than we ever could have foreseen and something fails. And those contingencies can produce sanitary sewer overflows, which also can cause fines. So we need this money to deal with the things that we know about and also to deal with the contingencies, the things that we don't know about that are weather-driven, that are based upon circumstances that are far more limiting than we ever could have foreseen. So although this is a very scientific-based proposal and, you know, we're trying to manage the asset in accordance with the best assessments that we could bring to the table, there are elements that could, or situations that could manifest themselves that would be another need for these funds to be in place and we would have to reprogram monies to deal with those unknowns. So it's a difficult business, as you said when you started. And those are some of the reasons why it is so difficult to manage to a permit. But another very strong reason why we need these funds on hand to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Jim, Pete, any comments you'd like to make?
It's Jim. Just, you know, as a 20-year member and, you know, long-term steward of the environment as part of the WPCA, as all of us are, just wanted to reiterate the time is really now for a comprehensive maintenance strategy on the 50-year-old system. But we do also hear, you know, the voices of the public saying, you know, it's time for another 50-year plan or 100-year plan. And we do plan, as you had stated, with the new facilities plan, you know, to project forward, you know, into, you know, a different future where the capital investment that we may put into a consolidated system of whatever type would reap the benefits of reduced operational costs. There's a lot of operational staffing cost with a multi-plant system and then reduced maintenance cost of having, you know, repeats of various types of equipment.
Thanks, thanks, Jim. Pete, would I say anything?
Yeah, that's true. Basically, what Chuck said in your opening comments, it was excellent and very good. I think explained everything of our whole problem and we need everything else. I think you did an excellent job there. The only thing I'd like to add is just like Jim said, we got to look for the future. You know, I think we get this bond and everything and straighten things out temporarily for now. I think what we have to do over the next five years is plan for the next 50 or 100 years. Maybe, you know, go to one plant and everything. And I think that's a major concern that we have now, is to have a plan for the future. And again, I compliment everybody on the comments, Lynn and Chuck and Jimmy all did a good job too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Pete.
Can I say one more thing? Because that brings up another point, which is that the money that we're spending now is primarily on the collection system, which isn't going anywhere. And from the time we had completed a facilities plan, you know, dealt with the public input, got Deep's approval, issued contracts and all of that, and stuck a shovel in the ground, it's probably a minimum, an absolute minimum of five years. So no one should be confused that this is money going to waste because it isn't. It's really going to take care of the capital needs that we have for the next, we hope, five, six years.
Okay, well, thanks. I guess with that, I will close the public hearing portion. And the only other item of business is the consideration of a motion to move forward the $10 million appropriation for the wastewater treatment facilities, collection system treatments, and the authorization of the $10 million in bonds and notes to finance that appropriation. Let's move it on to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, consideration in vote in accordance with government head Lamont's Executive Order 7S. Having said that, somebody want to move that?
Sure. It's Jim. I move that we proceed with the $10 million bond to move forward to the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen for the critical wastewater improvement system repairs.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this? I'm not hearing any. Call to vote, all in favor? Any opposed? The extensions? So that would pass by. Thank you very much, everybody. Anybody who's listening in, thanks for attending, listening to us. We hope you'll give us some support and the next phase will be to the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and we look forward to assisting them in their deliberations and considerations. So with that, I'll adjourn and have a nice evening, everybody.
Thanks. Good night.